Right.
Application, is there more pages to this?
That's...
That's the title, not the application.
Oh, oh, I got the application.
You got the application.
Sorry, thank you.
Yeah, their application is here somewhere.
I was gonna say, I thought I saw it.
Recording in progress.
The Newton Board of Adjustments Call Public Meeting at 7:00 P.M. Please stand the, uh, the leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jim, just to go through, did you ask for attendance, please? I did that a little bit late. So the, uh, people out there know who they're talking about.
Mr. Kozak.
Here.
Mr. Hamel.
Present.
I couldn't hear what was said.
Can we turn the fans down?
It's attendance, he's doing attendance.
Oh, okay, it just, we couldn't hear what was being said.
Yeah, but, 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 the idea of turning the thing off, that, that, the acoustics are bad. It's cool in here, we're, leave it until it warms up again. Cause I couldn't hear what Jack was saying.
Oh, good, it's not just me.
I can't hear with the other noise.
Yeah.
Yeah, is that, everybody got their mic on, can you hear me now?
Yep. I can now.
This is the mic up here, Jack. You're on mute.
Yeah, there you go.
Now you're on.
You want my fire radio?
He couldn't hear Jack, cause he was on mute.
Okay.
You know, this, this is beyond a Pollock's understanding, I know that, don't you?
Okay, we'll let it go.
Is that better?
Sorry.
I think the combination of that and Jack not being on mute will, will help.
I'm still getting used to this.
We'll start this over again. Mr. Kozak.
Here.
Mr. Hamel.
Yep.
Mr. Sylvia.
Here.
Mr. Gibbs.
Here.
Ms. McCarthy.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Ms. Reardon.
Here.
All present, correct.
Tonight, we have a preliminary review. Just to go over some of the things that are reported on the preliminary. Remember, people, we're gonna go through and, uh, we don't go into heavy depth. We kinda, kind of, uh, again, with the preliminary views all around, about stuff that we might need, some discrepancies that we might need, or not enough information to make some, uh, make some judgments next month if that's what happens. And, uh, just that the board member might ask for some clarification and so forth. But we don't do into the depth like the, uh, the final one that will be next month, hopefully. Jim, would you read off the request, the, uh, for the preliminary review from Mr. Farara?
Um, please note, there is one correction, and that is the, it's ordinance fifteen point three, not fifteen point five. Daniel J. Farara of Newton, New Hampshire requests equitable labors from ordinance fifteen point three, location on lot, and twenty seven point eight subsection B wetland setbacks for his property at thirty seven Country Pond Road. The property is referenced as tax map five, block one, lot one dash two.
And I think Jim has given everybody a copy of the sections one, five, and twenty seven, eight, for our review. Mr. Farara, would someone like to stand up and introduce yourself, please?
I'm Dan Farara.
Okay. You might go over what you're looking for, yeah, beyond the application.
I'm new to this, so just, uh, excuse my ignorance, but I'm trying to, we put the foundation in and I, what? Oh, my bad. Yeah. Is it on? And I guess, we may, we meet the requirements for the front, and the, the reason why the side was the way it is, we're off by a couple of feet, is, um, the, um, the marker in the back of the lot for my sister-in-law's property line, either the tree people or the excavator guy hit the pin and either moved it or whatever, because when I went to go check it, it was bent in the shape of a L. It was literally just sitting there, so I think it got moved when they were doing the measurements, and that's, and then, the, um, um, the bulkhead wasn't originally gonna be where it is, and that cut down some of the footage on that side as well, just by a couple of feet or whatever it is. So it wasn't done on purpose, it was a total accident, I don't know who did it. I don't wanna blame anybody, but obviously, since the pipe is bent like that, I assume somebody either ran it over or whatever. And then the back, I, when it originally got surveyed, it goes back pretty far from where the foundation is, but according to Sam, these maps or whatever, the water something maps, that I don't even know what they are, is what he told me that, we, we thought it was fine, that's the frontage, but I guess he said it was supposed to be fifty feet to the old water table maps or something like that? I don't really know what, what that is.
Is that part of the denial?
Yeah.
Yes, correct.
And that's where the, what is this, is that what I'm meaning?
Yeah, he sent us off by like ten feet or something.
Activity required a building permit, so permit within fifty feet of the poorly drained, is that what we're talking about here?
Yes.
Yes.
You on the denial, just to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yep.
I'm sorry, what? Is it, okay, alright.
Do you have a septic plan?
Yes.
We don't have a copy of it.
Oh, I, I didn't know you needed one.
Well, that's where all your wetlands are and all your measurements.
Well, uh...
They marked that all out on the septic plan.
Oh, I thought, I didn't give you one. I can print out some, but I have one here if you wanna see it.
That was one of the main questions that I had.
And did an engineer stake this house lot out?
Right, that's what I was gonna ask.
So, but, when you say front left, you're talking street side?
Correct.
Cause, remember, we're talking lakeside, front is lake, right?
Well, this isn't on the lake. This is not on the lake.
Oh, this isn't on the lake, I saw Country Pond Road, sorry. My, that's my fault.
The back of it is wetland, so...
What's that?
Is that the bulkhead?
Yes, V H.
We got a, we got a nice, you, uh, do you have any more copies of that?
No, I, I'm sorry, I didn't, I'll make it.
Would you like copies for your public hearing?
For the public hearing, definitely.
Just let me know what you need, I'll print them all out.
The plan that we did get, you know, the, the edge of, of wetlands is the mark there, but who, who surveyed where the edge of wetland is? It's supposed to be by a soil scientist, and I don't see any soil scientist.
The surveyor that we hired is the one who did the...
I mean, you know, so, so I, I think that there's a real question, at least from this plan, of where the edge of wetland is. To, you know, it, it, there's a line here, but it, it wasn't determined by, at least, I can't see where it was determined by a professional. A qualified professional for wetland edge.
And that's one of the things that, that my question was, you know, the, the soil scientist specialty person should have come not only to planning board, but to conservation, and all of this would be discussed, including erosion control. I went by, there's no erosion control at all, no erosion fences, no silt fences, no hay bales, nothing, and actually stuff is pushed into the wetlands.
Okay.
So that's an issue, just so that you know.
Yeah.
But we absolutely need something from a soil specialist. That should've been done, and this guy probably should've thought of that.
He's ninety feet away from the septic.
Yep, that's probably okay, it's over here.
Right, right.
That's bad.
This, this lot was originally approved back in, what, ninety-eight to be built on too, so I don't know what was done back then, or this, I'll find out.
Whatever was approved in ninety-eight has long since expired.
I know, I'm just wondering if it's a record of, of who, I was wondering if there's a record of any of the, of that.
Mr. Farara.
Just to let Ms. McCarthy know.
Ms. McCarthy?
I'm sorry.
I'll have, I'll have him supply copies of that. However, this original subdivision, this is a pre-existing lot of record. From, I believe it's nineteen seventy-two is when they did the original subdivision there.
He still has to comply with dredge and fill though, and...
Right.
And erosion control.
Oh, I, I realize this, however, when they came before the planning board, all it was, was for a lot line.
I see.
It was not, the subdivision was not brought...
Yep.
How much is this supposed to be?
Twelve, twelve, twenty-two, twelve, thirteen.
This is certification.
Yeah, it's, it's here, where it's short. This way to the lot, and here is fifty, supposed to be fifty feet, I think.
Right.
Yeah. To the poorly drained soil.
I didn't have a scale, so I couldn't...
Oh.
But I mean, and that's plant, okay, okay.
See, they must've added these two lots together.
Yeah, the system is here, yeah.
Of these two lots.
Here is forty-five.
No, no, this is a separate house already, yeah.
So this is an, on the back as well.
He's saying forty to, to a line, but it ain't the same line. Is there a scale on the same?
Oh, okay.
There's no, there's no scale. What kind of a plan doesn't have a scale?
I know, that's what Frank just said.
The scale, the scale on, on, on the plan.
It shouldn't be right there.
It should be, yeah.
Right down in here.
One inch, twenty feet.
Right.
Oh, it just said, okay, usually, usually they've got a...
On that, see here, you have the, you have the distance. It looks like the house got made bigger.
Well, I mean, if we look at our pinch point, right, and that's ninety feet plus or minus, and then we look at this one, forty-five, thirty-six.
Right.
It looks like this is, it looks like this where it lives, that's the proposed building, it looks like this got shifted...
That way, yes.
West, or east rather. And that's the issue, because, I'll tell you right now, forty-five, thirty-six, that's seventy-five, eighty-one.
You got sixty feet there on the septic plan.
Yeah, but, but the septic plan has still the same problem, that edge of wetland...
Yeah, but it's over fifty feet.
Yeah, but, but, but we don't know that, that line is there. That line wasn't established by a qualified...
That's right, a soil scientist, yeah.
So you don't know, you know, it, it, it could be here.
Yeah.
I'll tell you, if, if we're at ninety feet, oh, we're at ninety feet from there or not, so they're different measurements.
You saying the...
He's at ninety feet from septic.
Again, my, my, my question is...
Well, it's two different...
That's right.
It's showing two different things, so it's kinda hard to draw apples to apples on them, but if you, if you follow...
From the lot line over to the house is...
If you follow this, the wetland line on this and the wetland line on this.
And here is seventeen feet.
Yeah.
So the whole house is not...
What do you have there?
Eighty feet from there to the lot line.
Right, so that's why, we said it shifted way over.
It shifted way over.
Yeah.
And who did this plan over there, this one? Who did that plan? Was it the same guy that did this?
No.
No.
Yeah, it is.
Is it?
The stamp is the same guy.
Okay.
No, Pope?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you know what, I wonder if, I wonder if he sent me the wrong...
The wrong one?
The wrong updated septic thing, he sent me so many...
Really?
I'll have to ask him.
It could be.
Yeah, he might've sent me the wrong...
This is for the septic, right?
Wrong septic, cause he had to redo the...
You need that to get you building permit.
Foundation and everything?
Yeah, correct.
What's the date on this?
Foundation permit.
Yeah, you don't need any of that for the foundation permit, cause it doesn't, doesn't matter. And that's why I, I, yeah, cause it's kinda messed up.
So he...
Get a fa, you can build a foundation. It's once, you, they won't give you a building permit without the foundation being done first, right?
Right.
In, in town. So you do the foundation, and then you have to declare what the foundation's gonna be for, and at that point, it triggers everything else.
So he's saying that his engineer guy might've sent him the wrong one?
Yeah, that might be one of the discrepancies.
Cause there's so many documents, so this might be a different plan from the...
Well, it, it's obviously very difficult, but, but, this one has...
So would you have one that's newer than six months old?
I'm gonna, I'll have to look at my thing, cause that one, he redid, and I'm pretty su, I thought he redid that too, and I, maybe I just didn't print it.
Is there a date?
Yeah, this one's, this one's from December of last year, so, just, you can just ask him if he's got an updated one.
I didn't actually know I was gonna even make it here tonight, so, to be honest with you.
That's okay, we don't mean to scare you.
No, no, I wanna make sure you guys have what you need.
Right.
Yeah, it's always better to dump more info on us than less.
So we, we actually, we need a revised copy of, of a set of plans.
Yeah, he needs to check to see if there, this has been updated.
I, I think we need...
And we need a soil scientist investigation report.
Okay, this foundation where it is, we need a septic design.
A septic design in this?
No.
He just said to get a foundation.
No, 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 to get foundation, you don't need anything. Once you're done with foundation, you need septic and building if it's gonna be a residence. Cause he could, he could put a foundation on there and put a barn on there and...
He still can't, cause the building's too close to the wetlands.
No, but what I'm saying, it, it won't, it won't trigger needing the septic, is what I'm saying. Once you declare that it's gonna be a, a dwelling, that's when you need to provide everything else. So like, he could just put a garage there.
It still can't be close to the wetlands and the sideline.
I, I agree with you, but we were talking about, we were talking about this, but I, and that's...
I've never ever seen a...
That's why we need a copy of the...
A foundation without a septic design. I've only been doing it for fifty years, you know, it's... You should've had an engineer stake out the corners of the house.
I think we need a copy of the permit for the foundation.
Okay.
Right? Because that's what we're talking about, you, you currently have a foundation...
Correct.
You have a foundation certification exactly where it is.
So this is a foundation certification where it is.
Right.
But what was approved for the foundation is what I, is what we should be...
What do you mean, what was approved?
Just because this is...
You let it go in with no, with no paperwork, no septic design, which you can't do. Building department never should've... ...done any of that.
Give us your, when, when did you come to town hall for the first time for this project? And where, where did you go to do what?
Well, I was dealing with Bob Donovan in the beginning.
Alright.
Okay, and, 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 and what did you...
No, he's not here anymore, so...
Yeah.
Sam had to pick up where he...
Okay.
But you, you came, came to see Donovan for what?
Correct, for a building permit, I mean, for the foundation permit.
For a foundation permit?
Correct.
And, and you showed him a plan for that foundation permit?
Okay.
At the public hearing, I would like to see that plan, that Donovan saw and proved.
It's all, I don't know, Sam has it, I gave him copies of everything, Bob.
At this here, you need to supply the, the information.
Yeah, I will.
Okay.
Well, like I said, I didn't even know I was gonna make it in here tonight.
Who, who signed off on the foundation? Who, was it Bob or Sam?
I think it was Bob.
Do you have your little yellow slip that he signed off on it?
Um, let me see my notes. I'm pretty sure it was Bob.
Not trying to beat you up, Bob, it was just a lot of questions and, you know...
Just gonna get you better prepared.
I can add that to the list of items that you want.
Yeah, I've already got, we need a, a copy of the, each, everybody get a copy of the plans.
And give a foundation.
And we need a septic design and a set of plans.
Right.
He's gotta have a set of plans.
Soil specialist, review.
I don't disagree with you, I'm just telling you, as somebody who just went through this...
In the building department, should be looking at the foundation, they shouldn't be just looking at the keyway on the footings. There's more to it than just the keyway.
Well, and since, since we, Sam, myself, and the, the selectmen board, the, it's very clearly outlined on how the inspections on the foundations go. There's a soil inspection, then there's a footing inspection, then there's a file inspection.
And we don't have a soil inspection.
And that, cause that was one of my things when I did my foundation.
Right, but when you inspect it, you should have a set of plans to look at to see if it's on the right lot.
Might have it at home, I didn't know I'd need it.
That should be the town inspector looking at that.
I have a folder at home with a bunch of stuff, I didn't think, I didn't think I'd need that.
Yeah.
Well, basically, what you've come to say is there was a mistake made, and what we need to see is the whole history of where the mistake was made, and how.
Okay.
Because that, that, that is, has real bearing on whether or not this is an equitable waiver or not. Because if, if, if you just didn't, if you didn't do the step that you needed to do, then that, that's a different issue.
Should've hired him.
You hired the engineer. The engineer that drew up the septic plan.
Should've, yeah.
Stakes the house out, does all of that.
Sounds like you know more than he does.
Well, Frank's pretty good.
Where were you when I needed you?
I said the same thing after I did mine, I'm not gonna lie.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, this is Barbara, may I say something?
What was that?
Mr. Chair.
Barbara wants to say something.
Barbara, she'd like to speak.
Yes, can, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. To the best of my knowledge, unless they change the process, Frank is right, usually when you go to get a permit for a foundation, part of that is it, it shows where your septic and your, um, well is going to be. So I don't know whether they've changed the process or not.
What I can say is, based on my experience, six months ago, they have not. Because the plan I produced for the addition, which was, started with the foundation, the plan I had to submit included my well, my well radius, and my septic.
Okay.
So, that was part of the criteria.
Yep. Thank you.
Yep.
Oh, no, we changed the plans, cause it got too expensive. Maybe that's what happened, is we actually changed our plans, cause the cost of the house was just getting too, it was too fancy, the foundation and all that, so we changed it. And I, we gave him a copy of the, the plans for that, and everything was fine, that's why I'm wondering...
Did he file a dredge and fill permit?
What's that?
A dredge and fill permit? Cause that would've triggered conservation into the mix, and that's another thing that has to happen. Conservation has to be aware of this. This engineer, whoever did all this stuff for him.
Uh, that I don't know.
You don't know, okay.
I'm sorry.
Is he, is he available to come in for the next one?
Oh, I can, surely get a hold of him, yeah.
Might be helpful.
He's been doing this for a long time, so I don't know what...
Is he local?
It kinda goes back to the building department, didn't do the steps correctly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because the building department should've told him that the foundation's wrong.
Right.
At the footing level, not the wall level.
True.
Not that, one that we don't have, the foundation permit that we don't have in front of us, so we can't see that. Which is kinda where we wanna start, with the foundation and the paperwork that was submitted with the foundation permit, which I'm assuming was signed off, because, you know, he got that done, and then he came in to get this, and Sam went out and looked at it, and that's when the denial was triggered.
Yeah, but he didn't go out with a set of plans to look at it, because the septic system isn't approved by the town.
Right.
So he went out with no paperwork to look at something. Yeah, it looks good, okay.
Approved, you mean stamped by, uh...
It, the septic design is supposed to be stamped by the town and the state.
It, it is, it got sent to the state, and it got, I drove all the way to Hampton to have that guy...
That plan you showed us isn't stamped by the town.
Then, then it must be the, um, he must have it then. Bob, Bob has that, cause I drove all the way to Hampton to have that guy stamped.
Alan should have a copy of it on file if it's approved.
No.
Yeah.
That I do know.
Okay.
Yeah, it got signed.
Well, that's what he should have when he goes out to inspect the foundation.
Yeah.
Well, like you said, maybe this wasn't a current one. I, I know when I didn't mind, there was a couple of renditions on...
Right.
Actually, that one that got signed and stamped, I don't even know if I have a copy of it, I think it, one went to Bob, and I think that the guy that stamped it, I think he kept the other one.
Well, he should always, you should always keep a copy of that.
Well, he said he was gonna file it here in my file or whatever, so...
Right, but you, it's just good to have on hand, so like, if you do anything in the future, like, like I was just saying, like, you always need, you can always rely on that plan
of where your well is versus where your septic is, and you, all of the plans really are kinda drawn off that.
Am I wrong on that, Frank?
And, and you do need another septic plan, because it's not, the septic plan doesn't match foundation certification.
I think that's the wrong one, I apologize for that.
So he thinks that's the wrong one, that there's an updated one that would match this.
Which is, which is easy to get.
From the lot line?
What's that, I'm sorry?
This house is seventeen feet from the lot line?
The bulkhead, I think.
The bulkhead, yeah, originally, the bulkhead wasn't going there, and then, like I said, when it got put in, not knowing that that corner was messed up like that, that's how that happened. There's no other reason, yeah.
So the septic hole is dug off the lot line?
Yeah.
Right.
It is.
The septic hole that you have there for the leach bed is dug on the next property?
No, no, the septic is, was measured, it's right where it's supposed to be.
It's up here somewhere.
I, I don't, I went by it once, weeks ago.
I know they measured it, uh, exactly the one from the state, so I know that's right.
What did he say about it?
Even changing the location of the foundation, you need a new septic plan. You need a hazbill.
Okay, why is that?
Because the state wants accurate numbers on everything.
Yeah.
Of the, well...
Can't have the house over there when it was supposed to be over here on the plan.
Okay.
So that has to be redone.
So if the found, I mean, the septic's where the state wants it to be, even though the house, the house has moved, what?
Well, as far as the, as far as the, yeah.
The plan is incorrect.
Right, so as far as the state's concerned...
I gotcha.
The, what you have, what your plan reflects and what you actually have are two different things.
Okay.
And the state, I'm sure, isn't there to, you know, realize that, so you're gonna, Frank's right, you're gonna need...
Like an hazbill.
Yeah. Which should be a pretty light lift for your...
Yeah, no, thank you.
Pretty light lift for your septic guy, I would imagine, especially if he already has this and this is accurate.
Right, right.
Okay.
And it's just a matter of like, making sure that his well goes in the right place
Right.
in comparison.
You can...
Man, I can easily fix the side variance, I'll just buy, uh, two feet off my brother and my sister and do another lot line adjustment, call it today. Yeah, is there a fence requirement, height and Newton, and like a plot up between the two?
To protect you.
Cause what's the highest you could put up?
Oh, that's funny. Alright.
I think for a preliminary, I think we've covered all the bases, I just wanna, I just wanna write down and make sure Jim and I are in agreement on, on the deficiencies. We need a soil specialist inspection, correct?
Yep.
Jim, you wanna write these down, or maybe you...
I already have them written down.
A copy of the plans for multiple members, foundation permit? Foundation permit?
You want a copy of the... I'd like to see a copy of the foundation permit that was issued and signed off on.
Yes. We definitely need that.
A septic system on the plans, the design, or what are we looking for in the septic system?
We need to confirm that the plan... That that plan...
Well, we need a copy of all the accepted plans.
Yeah.
The foundation-accepted plan, the septic system-accepted plan, and then this one here, which we already have.
Yeah.
And I think that's the plans that we need to be able to see.
I agree.
I'll get ahold of Sam and see if he can give me the folder that Bob has all my stuff in.
Jim, did you get all those? Jim? Okay, thank you. Okay.
The other thing, according to our zoning ordinance, conservation has to do a site walk.
Okay.
So I'll give you my cardamom conservation.
That's great.
Okay.
Come on over.
But that doesn't...
That's a good segue.
Impact the timing of the zoning board.
But it says, "The onsite investigation will be filed with Planning Board and Conservation and confirmed by an onsite inspection of the reference site by the Conservation Commission."
Yeah, but that... The timing of them doing that has nothing to do with the timing
No, but the time, well...
of the ZBA doing... Making a decision.
I understand that. But I'm telling him some of the things. We're doing a list of what needs to be done so that he isn't hit by a car when he comes back and didn't do something.
I'm hiring him. I told you.
Okay. Okay. I'll be your manager.
I think that's a good segue, Trish. I mean, do we want to do a site walk of this property? I know Conservation's going to do one.
Yep.
If Conservation's doing one, does the board want to do one so we know what we're looking at? It seemed to be helpful the last time we did one.
Before we do a site walk, I think we need
More information.
accurate plans, right.
I don't disagree with that.
Doing a site walk, but if we don't know what we're looking at, if I'm just looking at... Oh, yeah, there's a foundation there and the...
Right. I mean, I stood in the street today and looked at it, but I mean, I didn't have anything in front of me.
Everybody think that's a good idea, then, to do a site walk after we get the correct set of plans?
Yeah.
I guess that...
If soil scientists stamp the set of plans, that's what we should be looking at.
Right.
True.
We don't need to do a site walk.
Okay.
As long as we have a soil scientist.
Right. As soon as the soil scientist is going to stamp it, that's what we should be looking at.
Okay.
Okay.
How do I get ahold of somebody like that?
Through your engineer.
Ms. White, let's speak, please.
Go back to your engineer.
Okay.
Excuse me?
They didn't need it because the septic's so far away from it.
Okay.
You know, and on their plans, they weren't close to it.
Okay, Barbara wants to talk. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Barbara, go ahead, Ms. White.
Do you not think that maybe to start with, it wouldn't be a bad idea to just see if Jim could go and get a copy of everything that's in the file in this file in the building department to see what was received by them? And copies of the inspection for the foundation?
Yeah, but that's what we asked the applicant to supply.
Yes, but he's not necessarily going to have all the inspection slips and stuff. And I think it would be a good idea to know what was... What's actually in the building department file to go forward. That's just my suggestion.
Not that I want to give Jim more work, but I tend to agree with Ms. White.
I do, too. Because it's so frustrating to be on that side and hear all of this. It's daunting.
Yeah, not everybody's like me that keeps copies of everything like that.
And it was so daunting for you. You joined. You might have to join this committee.
I know. Yeah, no, it's definitely a lesson learned to just keep copies of everything. I mean, that's what I did, and it was not... It's not easy. I get it. Trust me.
Mr. Doggett?
Oh, I was just going to say, I always assist applicants. So that's a certain amount of this stuff I will be able to find tomorrow night. I will... I'll be down in the building department for my weekly discussion with the building inspector about what's going on. And I can actually get a bunch of this paperwork that's in the town's hands because I'm not certain what they give. As you know, you don't necessarily get an inspection sheet.
Yeah. I don't have... I don't have a... I don't have my inspection book for me. Come on down. Come on down and pick it up next time you're in the area.
When I went to get that.
If I could suggest if you...
Septic one stamped, though. I was told I only needed two copies. So I brought him two copies. He stamped them both. I gave one to Bob, and he's... The other guy kept the other one. He wouldn't let me keep it, to be honest with you.
It's supposed to be three copies.
I was only told to bring two. I'm just telling you what I... I would have brought ten if I had to.
One goes to the town, one goes to the state, and one goes for you.
I should have hired you. I told you.
Well, I'll deal with the number of copies.
That's what Bob told me to do. I'm telling you right now.
Mr. Farrar, if you wanted to do a site walk, I was going to suggest that you choose like the 29th of July. I'll be doing the board packets for the next meeting on the 27th. You should have them in your hands if you want to do a site walk.
Set the plans, Jim, at that time?
All of the paperwork that's been requested.
All right. Everybody listen.
But that's assuming there's a soil report that we can look at. It's silly to do a site walk if we don't have... If it's not done by then.
Because then we don't know where the line is.
That's right. So that's going to be first.
I'll find out tomorrow as soon as you can do that. I'll call him.
What I'm suggesting is a possible date if you want to do a site walk.
So let's... If I... Do I need a motion?
Do what?
Or that... You know, we tentatively schedule a site work for the 29th.
You schedule a site walk, and if something happens, the chair can cancel it.
We schedule a site walk for the 29th as long as we have the soil samples.
I don't think we'll have it by then, but it's up to you.
Well, I... Couldn't you guys just do a site walk right up the street of the cards?
With everything that's going on in the world today.
That was super helpful.
You couldn't have walked by there while you're there?
I'm sorry, Trish.
If you'd have known.
With what's going on in the world today with soil scientists and the engineers that we're dealing with on the conservation side, if he doesn't have one, it's not going to be done in three weeks.